I think it's a lot of things, even more.
Yeah, the condition is they'll have to go through that to get it.
That's on, yeah, we'll announce, we've asked on, remember if they've watched them. Just assuming you would ask them. But later on, until everybody gets in.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, how you doing?
Is it your name?
Believe that, he'll tell you none of them.
Was that the dream or the nightmare? Oh, no, she's in, she's in New Jersey.
Oh, that's right.
Hey, how are you, Andrew? Just until we get everybody settled. So, since we get everyone settled. The middle. Once we get everybody settled. I think what we're gonna do is let them make each make a presentation.
Yeah, so.
Well, one. Hey, Cleo.
Okay.
Hey, Cliff.
Andrew.
Carolyn.
The whole gang's here.
Just about.
So, let's.
Sure, go ahead. You could do it later on.
More clean my glasses.
I'm concerned I get into my mouth, sorry.
This has, we're here, it already says that's a previous thing they can say. They're gonna.
Right, right.
What's he saying?
This, the question.
Of course, Van Gillen.
Yeah. She, um, turned out even how it talks way off, about the sidewalk and.
Yeah. Her ready.
Hot mask. It's kinda like.
It's for sports.
Sports.
You're reading out of the pack.
Oh, good.
Six dollars.
Looks like it's got like thick material.
Double ply. I think.
Anywhere, that's fine.
I just had a little triple back.
Okay, great. So. All right.
By the way, you should have, um. Oh, two, it's kinda like two. At my, uh, same. We had five minutes of same thing for me last week. We were all sitting at the same distance. And first of all, I couldn't risk getting anything to say. Because we don't have, he was talking. And I took off my mask because I had coffee. Looking at me like I was like.
Okay.
And it got a little, a little, you know, awkward. And then I finally said, by the way, just you know, I'm taking my mask off. Happy to put it back, but I'm far enough on vaccine.
It's okay.
But, yeah, so they're at least endorsing.
I just don't wanna. I can't talk and drink my coffee to me. And suddenly, everyone said, yeah, I'll take it. It was like someone had to break the ice.
So while we wait to get started here, uh, we, the way we've been operating meetings, assuming that every, that anyone who is vaccinated, you may be remove your mask. I think most of us at the table will. Looks like most of us already have, except me. So, but if you are not vaccinated, out of respect for everyone in the room, if you would please keep your mask on, we'd most, we would greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much. Hey, Glenn. Kayla, are we ready? Terrific. Okay. Looks like we just have three people on, is that correct? Okay, great. So, good evening, it is Tuesday, April, excuse me, October the fifth, feels like April. But anyway, it is Tuesday, October the fifth at six o'clock, and we are here for a public hearing. We have two items for consideration for the public hearing this evening. And I would call the meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is a presentation and discussion of a public hearing regarding the site plan for Fancy Pants, holding LLC SP three dash twenty-one to allow the construction of a mixed-use building with associated site improvements to be located at eight twenty Kings Highway, Zone General Commercial, Sussex County Tax Map three thirty-five dash eight point one five dash fifty-eight point zero zero. This project has been reviewed by the Joint Review Committee, and there are recommendations that came out of that committee. And I would defer at this point to Janelle Cornwell to talk through the plan at this point, and then we'll have the architect can make comments after that. Okay, Janelle, please.
Thank you. So again, this is a site plan for mixed-use building with site improvements. The proposal is for retail on the first floor and two apartments on the second floor. It has been reviewed by the Joint Site Development Ad-Hoc Review Committee at their September seventh meeting this, of this year. And they made the set, uh, the following seven conditions. That they encourage and anticipate the construction of a sidewalk along Kings Highway and to coordinate with DLDOT regarding the construction of a sidewalk. The second is resolve or have a resolution of the property boundary discrepancy before final site plan approval. Three, provide a cover to the second floor access, which I can actually note has been provided on revised architectural drawings. Four is provide landscaping along Kings Highway on both sides of the entrance. The landscaping shall be shown on the final site plan. As part of a landscape plan, use native and non-invasive species that are good for stormwater management. Five, provide lighting on the building, all lighting shall be screened, shielded and downward screened, lighting shall be shown on the final site plan. Six, provide windows or skylight to the rear exterior of the building. Again, that has been done in revised architectural drawings. Seven, provide an opaque barrier trash enclosure for the trash containers located under the stairs. And finally, eight, recommend approval of the elimination from the loading space requirement. Again, it's for a mixed-use building, they have gone through DLDOT and have gotten, um, entrance plan approval from DLDOT. The DLDOT letter does state that they'll have to comply with any necessary field changes as DLDOT is planning a road project on this road in the future. So that has been anticipated through the entrance plan approval letter. They also, I wanted to say, um, were, worked with the Sussex Conservation District. And will also need fire marshal approval. I think they, they've submitted once already for fire marshal, and they're still working a few minor things out. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here to provide any, any additional information.
Okay, thank you. So at this point, I would invite the architect or the prod, the owner of the project, Pauline, if you, if you would like to speak, or if you want your architect to speak.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Carlton Savage, I am a registered professional engineer with Scaled Engineering, Rehoboth Beach. The address there is two zero two four six Coastal Highway, Rehoboth Beach, one nine nine seven one. I'm the engineer on the project, civil engineer, the architect was unavailable tonight to attend. So we did bring the builder that intends to build the project, from WN Builders, Daniel, and the owners here as well to answer questions. So I, I'll do as much as I can on the civil site and anything I do know on the architectural. And if we need to ask them some questions, we can for the building. So to clarify, just to start out, Janelle did a great job explaining the project. We've worked with the ad hoc committee. And the ad hoc committee has approved it with some conditions, we have no issues with the conditions. The architectural plans have been revised to show all the conditions they met. They wanted to cover the staircase. We are gonna provide a trash enclosure underneath the staircase. I don't believe that was shown in the plans, but that is the plan to put underneath, we have it on our site plans now. We're at the step, at this point, that we're working with the Board of Public Works to finalize utilities. That's kinda where we're at. So if you guys are acceptable with the plan, we'll keep moving with that and get the, the final plans created and everything over to Janelle. This project.
The project's already served by utilities, correct?
Yes, yes, and the Board of Public Works has agreed, there's been some communication that they will provide services to the, to the project. The big thing is the building, because of the residential component, will need to be sprinkled. So we'll have to make the fire connection to that and provide the necessary details. But there is water and sewer already provided to the project, we will just be upgrading that and reconnecting is, is the hope. The existing site, the plan is to demolish the existing building that's there. There's an existing gravel drive as well, we intend to leave a similar gravel drive. For the, for the proposed project, there are, the size of the building, basically four parking spaces for residential. There are two units on the second floor. So the calculation provides that we need four parking spaces for residential. They are smaller than the commercial parking spaces, they're nine by eighteen. And we propose them in the back for a purpose, that's to get the residents away from the commercial. And there is, given the shape of the site, the site narrows as you go towards the back. So we get, we start living, losing driveway width. So we'll keep the commercial up front, residential in the back. We will sign those parking spaces for residents only, so hopefully no commercial traffic is entering that area. We do have one handicap space on the front, along with one, two, three, uh, five other additional spaces. That does meet the demand for the, uh, for the parking. The loading space, we don't intend, as Janelle was mentioning, we don't intend a large loading for this use. A truck here or there, maybe for deliveries. There's a lot of open space in the middle of the parking lot, it just wasn't conducive, especially with gravel, to try to identify some sort of loading space. So we would ask that, you know, that be waived, and I believe the ad hoc committee understood that and actually gave their blessing to move forward with that waiver, so. Again, water and sewer will be served. We are proposing a six-inch water line currently for the, the building fire suppression. We'll have to tap the existing main for that. We'll do that, hopefully when they do the entrance work, so they can be out in roadway at all the same time. We will, as I'm, I'm explaining it now, there, there will be, using the existing water main connection for domestic, we'll just extend that over. That may or may not be the final revision there, sometimes they like to come off the, the fire service, but since there's already one there, that's what we're proposing.
Do you know what that, what that, what that service line is, is it galvanized, is it copper?
We've, we've reached out to Board of Public Works, but I haven't gotten a, a follow-up yet, so we're.
That would probably worth investigating.
Correct, I agree. If, if, I mean, if it is something that is old or, you know, running a new one would be.
Or lead. I would, yeah, I would think you also would wanna do the same with the sewer line.
Yeah, the sewer line typically are PVC, so that usually don't have that issue with lead and different materials, but if it is something that's old, we, we look at doing.
Given the age of the building and maybe terracotta.
Could be.
What is the age of that building?
I do not know, I don't know if.
Anyone?
I just need you at the mic.
Come on up, Maureen.
Come on up.
Then apply yourself and speak, before you speak.
Hi, I'm Maureen Eschbach with Fancy Pants Holding Company. As far as I know, the building is from nineteen sixty-three, I want to say. So, um, that was what I was told last.
It could be terracotta, I just, you need to check that out.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Understood, sure.
Thank you, Maureen.
The, the site plan does show an area discrepancy, I know that's probably gonna be a question that comes up. There were two prior surveys to this that I, deeds have been ongoing, but two prior actual surveys that I pulled up when we started this project. One was in two thousand and two, and I think there was a, kind of a lot-line dispute between this neighbor and the one to the east. They agreed where that property line would be. With that survey, they created two bearing distance parcels, more descriptive parcels out of it. And I, I don't think there was a whole lot of effort given to the parcel to the west into where that property line was. And the reason I say that is normally when we do survey work, we look at our parcel and all the adjacent properties that touch it. You make sure all your neighbors have what they're supposed to have. In this case, they describe a boundary fence. Their, their, their property actually doesn't close if you were to draw it in AutoCAD or bring that bearing in distance around, it misses by like eighteen feet. So that's not a good start. So we, we actually looked at that, and the reason I pointed it out was, one, you never like to create a gap in ownership. If that is the original fence, then that may be where the property is for, for that parcel. But what we have done here, hopefully to speed things along, is we have designed everything within the property as it was surveyed by the last two surveyors. Chuck Adams and Adams Kemp surveyed it last, but based on that, they basically just pushed forward, the survey was done before. So, and I don't know what the purpose was, you know, whether it was for the sale of the property. But that is, that is why we put that there. You know, we, we intend to reach out to that adjoining owner, however, you know, it may, it may end up exactly like we have. But we don't intend to use it unless, you know, unless it is, in fact, property that can be used.
May I ask a question at this time? Janelle, with respect to the property line, are we assured regardless of if, how it's resolved, as Mr. Savage has described, we are, we're satisfied that we have the correct setback, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, that's not on the table for us to be concerned with.
None of the site plan, no matter where the property line is, complies with the, the setbacks in the zoning code.
Thank you, we just wanted, wanna confirm that. May I ask you another question of you? And if, if this is just a quick answer, I mean, my, how are disputes like this resolved?
I've seen them several, several different ways, it can be left this way. You have, you have two types of, you have ownership and you have title, that's a whole different legal discussion.
Right.
In this case, they may have a survey that they had done that isn't recorded, something we couldn't find, that, that does describe their property better. So until we reach out to them, we don't really know. They may look at us and say, no, our property goes to that fence, it's always been that way. We thought it, you know, was that way all along. Typically, at that point, you could do, you could do a couple of things, you could probably do some sort of lot-line agreement, just like was done prior on these properties. I really think what happened, when I dig into it, I think Wingate and Ashenbach found the corner for the subdivision behind, and use that as a known point, not really looking to see where the adjacent property went to. You know, they weren't really super focused on that side of the property, should have been, because now we have this possible issue. It, it might be that I'm just being overly cautious. But when I work on any type of project, I wanna make sure that, you know, this isn't an issue, so.
Thank you. I think the adjacent property has been owned by the same family for a very long time.
Yes.
So it's prob, their survey is probably very old.
I, I don't know that they've ever had it surveyed.
Yeah.
So that, that might be the bigger problem.
Actually, it was probably surveyed when this parcel was taken off of it.
It, it's possible, I know, I know the deed for the adjacent property was, was, it, that property did come out of the larger property. And if you actually go to the county records, you'll see that there are S's behind all the distances. That typically means the county has scaled those properties in.
Rather than.
Rather than actually having surveys to back it up. So that's, that's a good indication, their survey may, may not be too, either not accurate or have never had one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, realistically, unless anybody has any questions, I'd love to answer, you know, but we, we do intend, we have a list here that I'll go through. Landscaping, we are intending to provide some landscaping where available between the right-of-way and where our entrance and parking areas need to be. We have on our plan now, we have a small landscaping plan that we will run through staff, and they can review the native nature of those plants and ensure that. I don't know if there's any actual requirements, but it's something that was asked for, that we provide, so we will do that. And also, I think there's some, some plans, and maybe do some planners around the building. We have to kinda have these sidewalks next to the building, but any, anyway, we can make, make it, you know, a little nicer looking, we will.
And in terms of using native and non-invasive species?
Absolutely. Yep. We usually put notes on the plans stating that, or we'll describe the plants that we will put. In this case, it's, it's not a huge area, so it's not a major landscaping plan, but we will, we will, I think right now, we do have some plants on there that are native. But I'll run that by the owner, make sure they're okay with it, and then go through.
May I make a suggestion about that? I mean, I, I don't have a proof of to do this, but I just know this from being around, you know, familiar. You might find if you have any need for additional resources as far as plantings go, there are people who serve on the byway committee, who work in that medium, and they might be very, it'd be a good resource for you all to reach out to. Yeah.
We did reach out to the byway committee, and they sent us some documentation. I believe I forwarded that on to the owner, but that, that is the intent, forward that on, if, and there is some good programs there that, you know, on some of these corridors that are nice.
Thank you.
Lighting, we just planted on the building, as we mentioned. Any lighting that would be coming from that building should be screened away, we have notes on the civil plans, as well as the architecturals. There were windows added to the back of the building per the, the recommendations, our trash enclosed underneath. The second floors were covered, and we did add a note on our plans at this point that will go on the final plan, that will acknowledge the fact that sidewalks are possible and, and to be anticipated in the future. With the entrance approval that we have, there are no sidewalks required. I believe that's because, well, the reason being is it does not trigger those types of improvements with that small entrance approval application. So it's a lesser approval than what you typically get for larger projects.
And I think.
Can I ask you that about, have you consulted with DLDOT, because it's been suggested that, that there might be a widening of Kings? And have, have you been made aware of any potential imminent domain or?
I, I have not personally contacted DLDOT, so Daniel worked before I got involved with the DLDOT Fire Marshal, and pretty much got pretty far along when we got to the site plan approval process, that's when architects, surveyors, engineers were required. And that's, that's, so I don't, I don't, I haven't had any communication with them. I do know there are projects locally, which normally when they do that process, they, they discuss that in those meetings. But I, I not personally have had any communication.
For the record, I note that the letter of approval from DLDOT is dated March the second.
Correct.
And there have been additional workshops and planning begun on that road. Although this plan is good for one year, this approval is good for one year, there has been additional work done. So it may be worth checking back with DLDOT to see what's, what's gone on, on the impression that, of the understanding that some of the property owners across the road have been required, or been advised there would be issues related to their property, it might be worth, so you don't spend money only to have it taken up or become waste in three or four years when the actual road construction takes place. Okay?
But you've not been notified by DLDOT that that's a possibility?
Yeah.
No, I mean, and, and this is, this is the new process that actually is in place for DLDOT. It, it's when your ADT is below a certain amount, you know, site conditions don't require the larger entrances. They still will need to get an entrance permit. So you, you know, it's kind of a disconnect between, you know, the planning staff at DLDOT and the actual guys that inspect the entrances. But the entrance permit, once, once approvals are had for the total project, an entrance permit will need to be pulled, and they'll have, they will have, you know, onsite pre-construction meetings. All of that will occur, so hopefully that, during that process as well, any type of change to the roadway will be provided at that time.
And I can, the letter from DLDOT does says the applicant acknowledges and accepts additional requirements may be needed and be constructed in the DLDOT's right-of-way to promote safety and functionality of, of the new commercial. And that these changes may include, as field changes and could include, but are not limited to, sand relocation or placement, striping removal, additional striping, additional paving repairs, and additional transportation facilities, repairs, or upgrades.
I noted that in the letter, and it, so it's a pretty comprehensive list of what DLDOT has.
Correct.
Called to your attention as the owners that may be impacting the frontage of your property. May I ask you a couple of questions? Sure. Will all the utilities, I'm speaking of the electric, your communication, will they be buried underground?
I believe so, the electric, I have not had any communication yet about. But both water, sewer, and I believe any communication lines will be buried. I'm trying to think about the property, I don't see any overgr, overhead electric.
Currently buried, yeah.
It's all buried, and so, yeah, chance of it being buried is, is fairly likely that, I can't imagine it would go above ground now.
Right, thank you, and will you be requesting natural gas service there as well? Has that been suggested or explored, you don't know? Okay. All right. I have one more question, and I'm not sure who is, should be answering this, possibly our planner. And that is, I noticed in the plan it calls for a gravel driveway. And I'm wondering if that is in fact compatible with our current practices.
It would be, the general commercial has ninety-five percent lot coverage.
Correct.
They are under that, so the use of gravel is consistent with, because again, it counts towards its impervious coverage, so they included that into their coverage. So it complies with the lot coverage requirement.
Okay, so that material does qualify as, as pervious or impervious?
Impervious.
Impervious. Okay, thank you.
And from a, we are putting some parking bumpers into, that's the hard thing with stone, is how do you identify the parking spaces? So we will be putting some parking bumpers where it makes sense, the handicap space is actually concrete. That is so we can get our two percent cross slopes and ensure that is accessible, so.
Excellent. The natural gas question is a fair one, there is natural gas across the road. And it may be something you wanna consider, it's there, you would need to work with Chesapeake to see whether or not, you know, but there is natural gas across the road.
I just need you at the mic.
Leo, if you wanna, come on up.
I, I know people from Chesapeake, I'm Dr. Leo Eschbach, I'm part owner of the property. And the way it works is you have to have enough people for them to substantiate the cost of the line, so. Unless everybody on that side of the street, like, probably fifty to seventy percent would run that line.
That's right, that's how it works.
Right, they, it, it, it wouldn't go.
Yeah.
So.
But it's there.
Yeah, it's there, right. I, I couldn't even get it where I live, and it's down the street, they wouldn't run it.
Yeah, we're aware. We are working with Chesapeake to try and get more, better penetration throughout the city.
Right, and even the hospital has it, but, again. Yeah.
They were actually the first building to get it.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a thought, but like, I think they would have to do a survey of every, of all the properties on that street for them to make it cost-effective to run the line.
Right. I think they're gonna be, if I remember correctly, Mayor, aren't they bringing gas into the project that's underway by, for Shell? The Shell project will have the, yes, that will have.
Are they running gas there?
Yeah.
Then it's a thought if they would.
Well, you've got, you've got the Warrington Farm and Shopping Center between, and the brush factory between you and that, so.
Yeah, right.
So you've got, and some housing.
Right, and I could talk to them.
Yeah, it might be worth a vote on.
Right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, are there other questions? Okay, are there other questions for Carlton at this point, Mr. Savage at this point? From the table.
I guess I have a question for Glenn or Janelle. If—if this goes on and gets approved, and then there's an issue with the imminent domain, they need this—I mean, there seems to be room in your plan anyway, but I mean, how does that affect us and then?
Yeah, so your—your approval today, if—to the extent you get there, um, and approval will be based upon the existing conditions. So if—if there's an imminent day—domain issue and something's condemned, then they're grandfathered for all intents and purposes.
Thank you. Okay, are there—are there any other questions from the table?
Fine.
Okay, I think we'll hear from the audience and then we may have some questions online. So is there anyone from the audience who would have a question? Yes, uh, come on up.
It's true.
How are you? Thank you for taking time to be here tonight.
Can you hear me? My mask on?
You can. We can.
Most people can. Chip Davis, one fifteen East Third Street. I'm a member of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. And, uh, I support your project. I just have a question about the sidewalk. Is it required or not?
Del Dot's not requiring it as part of the project.
Okay.
However, we do know that Del Dot has required the current development for O A Advantage Housing Project. That sidewalk has been required, and on the other end of the—the sidewalk has been extended, as I'm sure you know, all the way out to Beach Plum. Uh, so there's a gap there between, which I'm sure, and that's why one of the conditions of the Joint Review Committee was to anticipate the need for a sidewalk to go in across the front of the property.
Right, well, I realize that, and I think that's a great idea, but if—and is the big oyster in city limits, or is that—I don't know where the—the line is.
The big oyster is not in the city.
Okay. But just to use as an example, though, they have a sidewalk in front of their property.
Right.
Which is basically useless, because both ends—both directions, there's nothing there. And I would like to see the City of Lewis, along with Del Dot, coordinate so we have sidewalks the entire length of Kings Highway.
The—the long-term plan is to get sidewalks all the way out to the high school at a minimum. Uh, and, uh, but El—on—in this particular project, Del Dot has not made that requirement upon this owner.
Right, I—I—I realize that. I'm just expressing as a—
Yeah, I know, I appreciate that.
As a—as a person that does walk and bicycle on that road.
Yeah.
Today, given the construction that was down there, a vehicle went to the right of the construction sign, up on the grass, down the road.
Wow.
To—so they could get a little—little further ahead, but you see stuff like this happen with the constant backup of traffic now. People are cutting through the shopping center and swinging out, and I just think sidewalks, as far as the city can go, weed that end before our—the city. There's—I know where Beach Plum is, and seven fifteen Kings Highway is where it stops on the other side, so then you're walking in the road.
That's right.
So I—like I said, I support their project. I'm all for it. I just want to let it know that from a bicycle pedestrian standpoint, sidewalks should be put in.
Sure, I think we share your concern. Thank you very much. Anyone else from the audience here in the room care to speak? Okay, Kayla, do we have any questions from the?
Yes, there was one question.
Okay, is it in the chat?
Yeah, they're in the chat.
Okay.
I have a—okay, a first question.
Could you read them for us?
Yes, the first one, why is the building set back far enough to allow pure road extension of Kings Highway and a sidewalk? Shell and Big Oyster both had been required to drive a sidewalk, drive a tire. At this point, how are schools doing this road line? Some people have actually answered that question already about why, but not required.
Okay.
And then the second question is after an anonymous person.
Okay, we don't—we don't read anonymous, uh, input. If anybody would—if the person who submitted that question would do like to identify themselves, we'll consider it. Thank you. No other comments, and the person who submitted the anonymous question has not identified themselves, correct?
Someone is raising their hand.
I beg your pardon, someone is raising their hand?
Yes, they did say.
Okay, and go ahead. You can elevate them or if they—okay, it's Jay Tomlinson. Jay, we can eat—we're—you're—you can—
Okay, yeah, how you all doing?
Fine.
Thanks, Jay.
Okay, yeah, uh, thank you all for, uh, having me on. I just—just wanted to, uh, reiterate, um, uh, I represent a group called the Citizens for Responsible Kings Highway Development, and just want to, uh, to—to advise the group that there is a current, uh, Del Dot CTP, uh, and a overall byway, uh, Gil—uh, Kings Highway Gilznack Road Master Plan. Overlay—overlay, they calls for a four-lane median separated, uh, boulevard, um, fronting of, uh, uh, this particular property, uh, and they're ha—
We've lost you, Jay.
Conversations that are occurring, uh, and, uh, just, uh, probably should be considered in your deliberations. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much, Jay.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, I think that goes back to the comment—I made earlier that it might be worth—even though the letter is dated March the second, it might be worth touching base with Del Dot again to find out if there've been further revisions to their plan, uh, or if it's pro—gone far enough that it would have impact to your property. Okay, looks like Mary's on. Mary, do you have a comment? Looks like Mary had—
Yeah.
Great.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, um, this is Mary Roth. Folks, I am Chair of the Historic Lewis Byway Committee, and I just want to extend my thanks to the applicant, um, for their willingness to work with us on this project. Um, we're excited to engage with them as it relates to a landscape plan, um, not looking to have a lot of requirements, really looking to partner, um, and to come up with a plan of natives and—and—and all that would support that section of the highway. Also, um, thank you, Mayor Becker and others, for supporting the concept of, um, reaching back out to Del Dot since the entrance permit was approved in March. The Capital Transportation Project, which Jay alluded to, which is Dartmouth Drive to Freeman Highway, uh, did initiate design as of July first, twenty-twenty-one, so it—it might be worthwhile to engage with those folks. We would be very supportive of a sidewalk, not just a sidewalk, to support those folks who are walking out of the city to, uh, Cape and Open High School and others, but also to support this business as it relates to folks, say, at the, uh, Brush Factory and other places who could walk down to engage in this business as well, and also up from the station. So, anyway, I just wanted to check in to say we would like very much to engage with these folks and support their work in any way that we can.
Thank you very much, Mary. Any other comments? I don't think we have anybody else who joined us, and we've heard from everybody online. Before we close this section of—of this public hearing down, is there anyone else at the table who has a question?
None.
Okay, hearing done. I think we can close, uh, this item down. I would note that we anticipate that we—this will be on the City Council Agenda Monday evening for consideration for approval or to change, modify, modification, so. That's where we are. Thank you very much for coming, and, uh, we'll see you Monday night, I suspect. Thank you very much. Okay, we can then move on to, uh, item number two on the agenda, which is presentation, discussion of, um, and public hearing regarding the site plan for the Lewis Brewing Company, SP two dash twenty-one, with associated site improvements to be located on Savannah Road, Zone General Commercial, Sussex County Tax Map three thirty-five dash eight point one five dash thirty-nine point zero one. And I would invite, uh, either the architect or the project managers or to come forward and make a comment after Janelle finishes, okay? Janelle, you want to introduce the project?
Thank you. Um, so again, this is for the establishment of micro brewery within the existing buildings on the property. Um, the property is Zone General Commercial. It was annexed into the—the city this year. At that time, it was jo—Zone General Commercial. It's going through—it's going through the process, says the site disturbance is over twenty-five hundred square feet. There are actually no new buildings. They're reusing the existing buildings. Um, the far building to the west will be the micro brewery. The building in the middle will be the office, and the two buildings to the east will be used as storage. This application was reviewed by the Joint Site Development Ad-Hoc Review Committee, um, at their August twenty-fourth, um, two thousand and twenty-one meeting, and they ma—recommended approval for the site plan with the following conditions. One, that they provide a connection to the trail per Del Dot. Two, provide lighting on the building. Lighting shall be downward focused and shielded. Three, provide landscaping of low shrubs and our plantings at the end of the seven parking spaces facing the trail. Four, provide landscaping along Savannah Road in locations where the installation of a sidewalk allows. Five, a sidewalk shall be provided along Savannah Road in accordance with Del Dot regulations. Six, trash and recycling receptacles shall be installed near the connection to the trail. Seven, bicycle racks shall be installed on the site. Eight, a landscape plan shall be submitted for review and approval as part of the final site plan. And nine, um, low directional signage to the entrance off the trail shall be located near the northwest corner of the site to ensure people use the trail entrance. Um, they have reached out to the byways, as this was also on the byways, um, and they have, um, looked at that. They have actually provided an updated landscape plan, but it was not including the sidewalk, so they're going to have to tweak that one just a little bit. Um, and they are providing, um, um, the required parking spaces. Again, this is a micro brewery. The ordinance was just adopted to allow for a micro brewery. So it's based on the square footage of patron area for the micro brewery, and then the number of employees on the largest shift, and they actually exceed the number of parking spaces by nine. Um, they're required to have nine, and they provide thirteen parking spaces, or—I'm sorry. They're required to have nine and they have twelve parking spaces. Sorry. Um, Public Board of Public Works has indicated they have the ability to provide utilities to the site. Um, the Sussex Conservation District for Stormwater Management has stated that the site is exempt from a detailed stormwater management plan. However, standard permit A will be required. And a portion of the lot is within the point—zero point two percent annual flood cha—hazard, which is the five hundred year. And then the remainder is outside of the flood plain, and, um, they're—they are planning and providing bicycle racks on the site, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Other questions from the table before we get started?
I do have a question.
Please, Tim.
Uh, Janelle, would you—I didn't quite understand what you said about the sidewalk and the—I think you linked it to a revised plan.
Landscaping.
The landscaping. What—was that that you said, please?
So, um, they provided a landscape plan.
Right.
But the landscape plan didn't show the proposed sidewalk along Savannah Road.
Right.
So they're going to have to tweak the landscape plan because the landscaping was going to be within—on the sidewalk.
Oh, that's a little detail, yeah.
Yeah, so—and again, I—I think that's—that's actually very minor, um, that—to—to address.
I just wanted to make sure I understood what you said.
But they did submit a landscape plan.
Right, and—
And I'm going to guess their—their—their applicant—or the applicant can speak to that.
I bet he can, but before we go there, let me ask you another related question. I know at the last time that we—in this process, this was discussed, the pole line that's parallel to Savannah Road there, i—and the relationship of it with the sidewalk and the landscaping, is that all worked out as well?
I believe so, or it will be for the final.
Okay. I know—I seem to recall that being raised before.
Yeah, since the joint site development—
Not the pole building, the pole line. I'm talking about the utilities.
Okay, utility line.
Yeah, utilities will be addressed for the final site plan. Again, just for everybody's reference, if—after the public hearing and if council does recommend approval, this is not the final step. They will actually have to work with staff and all the other reviewing agencies, the state agencies, BPW, et-et cetera, to get final approval before staff can stamp the final plan before the building permit can be issued.
Right.
And just for the record, uh, this plan does involve an extension of the sewer line, uh, after we have annexed it, and they have worked with Del Dot—or with BPW to extend the sewer line, so. That work has already gone on, and that has already been planned. We'll be connecting from the point—with the property line of Holing Cove over up to that.
Digging across, yeah.
And then come across, so.
Thank you.
Okay, are any other questions from the table for Janelle before we go to presentation?
Can I make a clarification?
Sure.
Just so everybody knows, it's not gravity sewer that's being extended. This will be a pump station on site with a force main down to the Holing Cove location.
Right, thank you. Okay. There are no further ques—please, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is John Murray. I'm, uh, project manager with Cursor Group, Bob McDonald.
What was your last name? I'm sorry.
Murray, M U R R A Y. So I'll—I'll touch on a few things here real quick. First, I'll—since it was a topic of discussion, the sidewalk. So the sidewalk not being on the landscaping plan is actually—the blame is mine, and that is because after the meeting that we had with the ad hoc committee, um, I made an update to the site plan to add the sidewalk along the front edge. So the actual engineering site plan has the sidewalk now that's shown as interconnecting with the existing sidewalk to our east, to the rails to trails to our west. Unfortunately, I did not provide an updated electronic file to the architect, Doug Warner with Element Design Group, who's here this evening, so that is why their plan—the landscaping plan did not show the sidewalk, but sidewalk is planned. One of the reasons why we didn't have sidewalk on the—on the site plan previously is because we were waiting to have our pre-application meeting with the Department of Transportation. And we had—our firm had a similar project, which was along the rails to trails, where Del Dot actually omitted the sidewalk along the frontage simply because we were adjacent to the—the rails to trails, but we did have that meeting with Del Dot, actually quite a few members of Del Dot, last Monday. They did confirm that they would like sidewalk along the front edge, so the sidewalk that's shown on the two-dimensional plan is still shown. To speak to the alignment of the sidewalk, I think, which you were mentioning with the utility poles, uh, we can still provide the sidewalk. That's not going to be a problem. It's—it's not going to be a straight shot alignment across the property front edge just because there are two utility poles which prevent that. Uh, but we can still provide the sidewalk within the right-of-way with the interconnection, um, and still provide some landscaping. Uh, our con—our other concern about landscaping was simply because, uh, when we do a design for the site, we're required to provide Del Dot with—with what's called a site distance triangle at the entrance. So any vegetation, any landscaping that would be provided, and if it were to be within that site distance triangle, has very specific limitations that it has in terms of the height, obviously, simply not to block the view of any vehicles coming out. So I just wanted to mention that. And then—and again, I'm glad you pointed out, we—we did begin that discussion with Department of Public Works about the sewer connection, and as was mentioned, uh, there is a plan, is shown on the site plan, to have the sewer connection, but it would be a—a grinder that would be on-site, and then there would be that forced connection that would connect to the existing gravity line. So that would be the method of the—the wastewater connection to the city system.
John, in your conversation with Del Dot, were you able to also discuss the connections of the trail itself?
Yes.
Was that how that go?
Uh, perfectly fine. They're—they're very welcoming to having the interconnection. The one thing we did bring up, and I wanted to just touch on the committee's recommendations, was there was a notation about, uh, let me pull it up here, about the signage off of the trail. We were able to confirm in that meeting with Del Dot that any sort of signage directing anyone into the site would have to be outside of the rails to trails right-of-way. So I—I just wanted to point that out, that—
Sure.
They're fine with any signage back there. They just don't want it within the right-of-way itself.
That makes sense.
So that's—that is not a problem, and—and the updated site plan that we provided to the city shows the interconnection to the trail coming on to the site. Um, that is something very much that we want, along with the bike racks. We are showing a location for the bike racks on the site plan as well. Um, one thing that we did want to touch upon, uh, on the recommendations was, uh, number six. On the recommendations from August, uh, twenty-fourth states trash and recycling receptacle shall be installed near the connection to the trail. Uh, so I will say, uh, upon discussion with our clients, who are David and Christine Jones, who are here with me this evening, that is something that they would like potential reconsideration on, and—and I—the concern there is simply that they have no issue providing receptacles, you know, on-site for the business. The concern with providing the receptacles up near the trail is that they're going to be—become a dumping ground. Dumpsters in the area are typically bad enough for people coming after hours and trying to throw their own garbage into dumpsters. But, you know, that is a receptacle up there that—I mean, it's a great idea, but the idea of having it there in such a public location is a concern of theirs with public usage. You know, patrons is one thing, but just the general trail user coming down the trail and using it for their trash, you know, and knowing that that's something that they would be maintaining, uh, long— and knowing that that's something that they would be maintaining long-term.
Would you be able to show us on your site plan now where you might propose putting receptacles that would be effective for you and for us?
I don't know if there's anything truly to be finalized, but as you can see on the site plan, on the western end, where the production, I'll call it the production building, the large block building that's there now. As you can see, there's an outdoor observation seating area there. And then there's also just kind of an outside, we're just, for the time being, we're calling it like an activity and seating area. Around those locations, especially where they interconnect and where the sidewalk would come up, would likely be ideal locations. I'm sure that on the deck itself, that seating area, there would be receptacles out there for trash. The concern was just, the nature of the comment lended itself to kind of saying, putting receptacles up closer to the trail. And that was where we kind of took pause with that in terms of having something that could potentially become more of a, correct, a public receptacle instead of something that would be supporting the business.
Knowing that this is a commercial establishment and there'll be no city trash pickup, this will have to be handled by a commercial company, one way to contain that is to build a pin, some kind of a dumpster enclosure, whatever receptacles you're going to use. That will cut down greatly regardless of where it's located on public use.
Well, and that is the intent. We are showing a screen dumpster area that would be on the ingress side of the site, where you see that screen dumpster area. That is the intention, is to have something there that would be, you know, for the general use of the business.
Trash receptacles are a necessary issue, but they're not a very pleasant thing to look at.
Oh, absolutely.
And they can be, you know, depending on how they're managed, they can be a real problem for public. So I would encourage, I'm glad to hear you're thinking of a pin or some kind of an enclosure.
And I'm sure you could see, you know, part of the application and I think part of the submission package were some very, you know, very nice, very detailed, attractive elevations that Mr. Warner's office put together for the business. So I think you can tell from what's there now with the building and the site versus what the vision is for what this business would be. The Joneses have every intention of, you know, having the proper receptacles there to support the site and their patrons. Again, that was just, when we noticed that the comment was near the connection to the trail, that was the only thing in that comment that kind of raised a concern.
I think they've already demonstrated their willingness to improve the property by the fact that they've painted the end of the building, which is pretty okay. Thank you very much.
I think they were very happy to point out after the last meeting that they, one of their first stops was to go to the hardware store and buy some paint and paint that over quickly. It was something that was brought up several times, so.
Thank you.
I did just want to point out a couple of other things that did transpire since our last meeting. One of the things, I don't know if Janelle had mentioned, is we did receive the exemption from the Sussex Conservation District for having to provide any sediment or stormwater plans. Right now, our new impervia surface on the site is only 833.16 square feet. So it's relatively low. So that was not required. We did on September 13th, which was very recent, receive our site plan approval from the Office of the State Fire Marshal. I think that that was included in the application as well. I think actually it was like the last page at the very end was in there. Again, I just wanted to mention again, the sidewalk along the property frontage that was added. I believe that Element provided a preliminary landscaping plan, as was mentioned. Again, we did have that pre-submitment meeting with DELLDOT that took place on the 27th of September. And I also wanted to point out, and I know this probably didn't make it in the application, our client had sent this to the city, but it was likely too late prior to the advertisement. One of the questions that came up during a couple of meetings was parking. As was mentioned, we're currently providing 12 parking spaces on the site, which meets the code requirement based upon the patron area and the employees. Our client did enter into a discussion with the neighboring property owner at 1143 Savannah Road, which is the commercial business next door. They did provide a short, there was a very brief letter to Janelle. I don't know if it met the submission requirements, but I just wanted to read it into the record. It stated October 4th, 2021, "To Lewis Brewery, 1145 Savannah Road, from Richard L. Bryan, 1143 Savannah Road. Savannah Station located at 1143 Savannah Road hereby grants Lewis Brewery permission to park after-hours in our office parking lot. This agreement can be terminated at will by either property. Sincerely, Property Owner, Richard L. Bryan." So that is something that.
That was going to be a suggestion that you'd at least make an attempt, like, well, good on you.
Right, so that, well, I think that the Joneses are the ones who did all the legwork on that.
Yeah, but it was actually a discussion at the Joint Review Committee that you should approach them. So thank you for doing that. Thank you.
So that is something that has been discussed and seems like we can forge an agreement there.
You might want to formalize that with a license to use it, which is still cancelable, but, I mean, a letter, you may want to formal. Glenn, give a way in on that.
Well, it's always better to have something better than correspondence. I mean, that's.
That's very helpful.
It's hugely helpful. But yeah, contractually, a license agreement is a little bit more solid.
So, but again, this was very new, and it just happened, obviously, in a tight timeline, just yesterday. So I just wanted to mention that because I think throughout this application, both myself, the Jones family, the city has been very supportive of the repurposing of the site and the application. But parking has obviously been a constant.
Does that mean Dickie gets a sign back on the end of the building?
I don't think so. If you look at those elevations.
Nothing left of the end of the building to work.
If you look at those elevations, I think there's already some planage for some advertising on the end of the building.
I think there's a window.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's Dickie, all right.
Anything else?
Those are all the new things. I just wanted to touch on some of those items. You know, again, I know that the application's been heard on a few instances regarding the zoning and the annexation and the ad hoc committee.
It's been a long process.
Right, but I did want to just point out those items because they were relevant, especially along the lines of the recommendations that were made and the discussions that have been had to date.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any questions from the table? Okay, we'd open it up to the floor. Anyone from the floor care to comment? Yes, please, come forward. You have to come up to the microphone.
Excuse me, I'm somewhat muted now. I just can't get up and down.
Okay. Do we have a microphone back there, Kayla?
Oh, why don't you speak loud enough?
I want to make sure. Don't you can't, but I want to make sure that we.
I live near the.
Hold on just a moment. We're going to get your mic because we have to have it on recording. And people who are watching won't be able to hear you if it's not through a mic. So let's, let's just.
She's going to bring you a mic.
People who are watching, she's going to bring you a microphone because people who are watching won't be able to hear you unless it's through a microphone.
She's coming. That's fine, that's fine. Just stay where you are.
She's bringing you one, just a moment.
We're going to bring you a mic, okay? Yeah, there you go. Okay, Kayla's going to bring you a microphone. There you go. Thank you.
Okay.
Please identify yourself if you would.
Judith.
Yes.
Judith E. Myers, M-Y-E-R-S. Excuse me. I noticed in my travels around Lewis that there is property for sale, and it's been under different, I guess, ownership or uses for the last four or five years on Savannah Road across from, oh, where now my mind, Dairy Queen. And I noticed that they seem now to have the property blocked off into two lot segments for housing. I'm wondering, you know, zoning can be changed kind of with a whistle. I'm wondering why you did not choose that property, which is open and more accessible to the masses that come here in the spring, summer, fall. Then this teeny little piece of property on Savannah Road near a biking trail crosses the street from a car lot. I mean, how much more distraction do you need on the highway? Why wasn't the property, was the property on Savannah across from Dairy Queen ever brought into consideration?
Mr. and Mrs. Jones bought this property, and they sought the approval for this property. The other property was for sale. They didn't purchase that. So we had no recommendation for them to go purchase that property.
Well, I'm wondering why they didn't choose the property.
That, I don't think that's, I don't think that's germane to this discussion.
Okay. Well, anyway, so I guess my question is a mute issue.
Wait, what, the property that they purchased is the property we're considering tonight?
I know that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, Kayla, do we have anyone? Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to make a comment? Come on, Chip. You're going to get your exercise sitting in the back of the room.
You saw me ten hours ago, four miles this morning.
I saw you at 6:30, 6:15 this morning. You were already walking.
Chip Davis, 115 East Third Street. Again, I support your project, and I'm glad to see the sidewalks going in. I do want to just bring out the point that on the other side of the road, there is not sidewalks, and there are children that leave Shields Elementary and walk to Donovan's Trail Park. So it's a great time, since we're in a forum here, to bring out this. And again, I'm supporting the project. I just think we need to extend our sidewalks as far as we can.
And that is certainly a goal.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chip. Okay, all right. Is there anyone else from the audience here in the room that would like to speak? Hearing none. Do we have any questions from our folks on Zoom? Doesn't look like we do right now. Kayla, it looks like you got some questions. Want to read them for us?
I just have one. Can you use the mic, Kayla?
Yeah, Kayla, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I only have one question. It says, can you address the building architect? Will it be designed to be in contact with the historic Lewis and/or the historic barn buildings at the entrance to New Road where Old World Bread is located? Anything that you can do would be greatly appreciated. Good examples of other contact-sensitive design buildings are the Lewis Library and the Station on King's Highway and Big Oyster.
Okay. All right. I think, Doug, you want to talk to that?
You shared the designs.
We just pull up the designs, if you could, of the building. And this is a repurposing of the three buildings that were on the lot and a modification to the exteriors of those three buildings. Doug, do you have any comment that you'd like to make as the architect?
Yeah, Doug Warner with Element Design Group here in Lewis. Yeah, I think what we're doing is, as you mentioned, we're repurposing the existing building and having a little bit more of a cozy industrial look, actually, to a keeping the metal roof that's there already, softening it up with some woods on the corner, some glass to capture some of the look of the tanks inside, little bit of inviting feel. Continuing with some stucco feel on the outside, it being a block building. And again, integrating more woods into the front with the pergola area. I'm going to get that same kind of feel working with the office space that's going to be working next to it. So really, in our opinion, didn't lend itself to more of a barn look. It's not a barn structure. We didn't want to fake it in. You know, sometimes we see some architecture where we put some gambrelles and stuff on it, and it's all just gingerbread. We want to keep more of the traditional architecture of the building itself as opposed to forcing some other architecture into it.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question for you.
Sure.
The, this building that I think you described as the office, that's separate from this building.
Correct.
And with that, do you have an example of what you're designed as far?
No, we haven't developed that yet. We just did some as-builds. We're working out the interior spaces with our clients. But again, we're not going to change the shape of the building too much at all. We are going to, you know, integrate some of the same wood features into it and some of the same color patterns into it as well, but not really changing the footprint and not changing much on the roof lines whatsoever.
Because that building always, to me, looked more like a old house that had been adapted to a commercial space. And I think it might have been meant lived in, occupied.
Yeah, it's got some, it's got several different things working in there, for sure.
And I didn't know where you were going to go with that.
It's been an industrial-like building as long as I've been around, which is 40 years, so.
Right, right. But no, I mean, it's only going to behoove us to get that integrated look going on throughout the site. And I think that's going to happen with some of the trash receptacles and some of the bike racks and stuff like that. They're going to have some of the same feel, architectural feel, not just a metal bike rack and a green dumpster. You know, it's not going to, it's not the intent here.